We can get started. We have a group here tonight and they have already taken over the chairs over here one time. They threw this out. Came up and sat in our chairs and I hope you will do that when you get a little taller, a little gray like some of us. Some of you will be sitting up and other good places. This group is from Bear Creek Magus Church. They are the royal ambassadors for that church and Jerry Myers is their counselor, leader. I'm not sure what his idol is, but I'll tell you something, he has more fun than anyone else. He thoroughly enjoys it and does a great job. This group was with us about a year ago and I remember them well and when Brenda told me that you would agree to come again, I was very pleased. Glad to have you and continue to put your work through home. And Jerry, I'm going to turn it over to you for the plans and the prayers.
While they're coming up, let me say on behalf of our church, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to not only come out to do this, but to meet each and every one of you and take the pictures that we did. We greatly appreciate that. We've also have our GAs with us tonight too.
Let us bow our hands in prayer.
Dear Lord, thank you for allowing us to vote in this meeting in prayer. Please be with our county leaders as they conduct the business of the county. Please be with all that attended this meeting and wish you have a safe return home. Please be with the sick and the shuddens and bless our medical workers and protect our freedom. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Boys and girls, if you'd love to stand for our business meeting or if you have homework.
Unfortunately, we have a dinner date at another peace bar.
Thank you for coming. Mike, you like those comfortable chairs, don't you?
It already feels like church.
Okay, all of you, you have the agenda in front of you. Do I hear a motion and do you look forward with it? Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. It is fourth and four and waiting. Okay, our next area of business, I'm going to step aside. We will be discussing our potentially, our new attorney. He has, you and I have done work together in the past. He's been working for me. My son worked with him for a couple of summers as a law clerk and later as an attorney. And I think it best if I recuse myself and turn the program over to Mr. Weiskarver.
We'll need a motion from the board for this, for Chairman Humphrey to dismiss himself of this vote. Do I have an entertaining motion now for that?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, if you know what I'm raising my hand. Motion carries four zero. Okay, at this time, item number four, contract for the county attorney, we'll turn it over to Ms. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Weischer. If you recall, Ms. Smith sent in her resignation at the end of December and served until the end of December. Ms. Gross agreed to serve as an interim for that period of time. There was a committee that was set up to interview the individuals that submitted our proposals for county attorney. We had 12 different proposals. We interviewed six of those 12 and out of those 12 or out of those six that we interviewed, we narrowed it down to an individual that we thought was best suited to needs of Davie County. At that point in time, we began negotiating with that attorney to settle on a price for the contract. So we have done that and we're recommending to the full board. The contract that's in your packet is actually incorrect. You have an amended contract that's on the bench in front of you. The only thing that has changed for those contracts is the not exceed amount and then the monthly hours. So those are the only two amendments of those contracts. The one that's on the bench is the correct contract. So we would like to recommend Ed Vogler to serve in that capacity as county attorney. It is a year-year contract and then the contract has an out pause of 90 days by either party with written notice.
At this time, the chairman of the entertaining motion to accept.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, if you know what I'm raising my hand. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Do we have any discussion? Sorry. No discussion. I see no discussion. We'll ask for a votes. All in favor of Ed Vogler as the new county attorney, if you know what I'm lifting your hand. Motion carries four zero. At this time, I'd like to turn it back over to our chairman, Mr. Humphrey.
Thank you. I think now it would be appropriate to tell Ms. Gross how much we appreciate you filling in and I know you'll be glad to get back to your routine and get rid of me and Jim and Beth and others.
It's been my pleasure, thank you.
You did a good job and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
We might call you again someday.
That's fine, it's been my pleasure, thank you.
We have someone from the Department of Transportation, Mr. Mark Alrich.
Yes, I apologize, but Michael Boya from Department of Transportation could not make it today. I am Mark Alrich with the Northwest P. Monarchio. I'm speaking on his behalf. What you have in front of you is the Davie County Transportation Plan, which is a 30-year plan of transportation improvements for the county. We came back, we were here in December and went over the plan and the presentation through everyone. What's happened since then is in December is we had two public meetings, one in Moncton and one in Coolome. And we had a few suggestions from those recommendations and we put those in the plan. They were pedestrian for the town of Coolome and some bicycle routes for the other parts of the county. Those recommendations were put in the plan. The town of Coolome adopted the plan in January and so now we're here for adoption. Is there any questions about the, any projects in the plan?
Okay, do I have a motion on this plan?
I can accept the plan.
Do I have a second? Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, show your approval by the uplifting hand. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yes, sir. Item number six is the approval for engineering firms to conduct the East Davie Shore feasibility study. The RFQ request for qualifications went out. We did receive five responses from different firms. We set up a committee consisting of Ken, Robert, Johnny Lambert, Beth and myself who met and interviewed two of those firms. And you have at your desk the McGill and Associates recommendation from the committee. And our request would be that you give us the authority to negotiate a contract with this firm, which is where you deal with engineering services. We would get a consensus from the board before we actually enter into that contract. So you all will each know what the contract states and what the amounts will be.
Do we have a motion on this?
I'm moved to it.
Just second. Have a motion, a second, any discussion?
I'll just mention, Mr. Chairman, that a number of firms responded, a lot of large firms that did work for large municipalities. What was attractive to us about McGill was that they worked with small towns and counties and we felt that they made a very good presentation, their ability to relate to some of the issues that we're dealing with. They've had very similar problems with other communities and are relatively close and they're outgiving. So I think Robert would agree that pretty much unanimous that all of the firms that we evaluated and interviewed, that we felt this group would be more closely identified with our needs as far as what the particular aspect they've been asked to look at.
Anything else? All in favor, show everybody up lifting hand. Jim?
Item number seven is a resolution to accept the process of selecting an engineer for water, sewer and solid waste project. As you know, each year we have ongoing projects related to water, sewer, solid waste, a lot of maintenance type stuff, small projects that we don't do an RFQ for. We use great engineering here in Moncton and we're asking for that exemption again to allow us not to have to go after RFQ whenever there's a minor project or a landfill report or a monitoring well at the landfill needs to be checked and so forth like that. So this would be for all the minor projects, the ongoing day-to-day maintenance type stuff that every element requires engineering work.
Have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, show it, ready up lifting hand. Unanimous. This brings us to our public comments.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time in our meeting for fellow comments. If you can go to the podium, just let me name an address for the record and I make the comments to three minutes. The first individual to sign up to speak is Linda Mace.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners and staff. I'm going to go ahead and read this so I don't leave out anything. In the August 4th, 2011 enterprise, a letter to the editor from me thanked members of the Davie County Commissioners and the Davie County Board of Education for finally coming together on a long overdue plan to start renovations on our existing high school. It was my understanding then that this renovation was a done deal. Fast forward to September the 27th, 2011. This was the night that the two boards came together at the senior center to discuss school board concerns. I was sitting in the audience listening to questions from the Board of Education that were about a facilities study rather than the discussion about moving forward on the process of renovation that the BOE had already approved unanimously at their July 25th special meeting. I was once again confused about the course that our high school would be taking. I even asked a sitting school board member to get me the minutes of the meeting that confirmed the decision to go forward with the renovations. I did this instead of looking them up myself as you can do online because she and I had a difference of opinion as to what was approved. As of today, I still haven't received those minutes. I come tonight to speak to you because of a recent concern dealing with the facility study that is currently being compiled by the Little Group. As you know, this facility study was contracted by the Davie Board of Education and at a price of approximately $168,000 of taxpayer money. This group came in and interviewed not only this board, members of the school board, all of the principals of the schools and county officials. In turn, these folks that were interviewed recommended 40 Davie County citizens to interview also. I was very proud to be one of those 40. I met with a Dr. Shrek on Tuesday, January the 31st at 3:30 PM. The interview lasted approximately 45 minutes. Dr. Shrek was very nice and in my opinion, he didn't do what he was hired to do. He became the interviewee and I was there only to listen to his opinions. The lack of objectivity was obvious very early in the interview. He used words like "the high school was dangerous," "old," "on the dying side of Davie County," "the land beside the school was a gully" and "the traffic was horrific and not able to be easily changed." He stated that in his opinion, it was a waste of money to renovate an old school rather than build a new one on Farmington Road, and he actually said Farmington Road, and that the time was right to build. He also stated that he thought that industry and prospective teachers would be more likely to come to Davie County if we had a new shiny high school. Actually, there is no data that supports this theory. Dr. Shrek asked me about how I felt about redistricting the schools and would there be problems associated with it. I said that I thought there might be problems, but Dr. Shrek explained that our superintendent liked the idea and would put a grandfather clause in for the kids that currently were enrolled in those schools. Basically, I felt like I was only there to have my opinion changed rather than to have mine heard. I spoke with Steve Ridenour of the Board of Education and I let him know about my concerns. He spoke with Dr. Hartness and then with another interviewer from the Little Group. I was re-interviewed by phone on Thursday of last week. By the way, I may be the only one interviewed that will speak out, but I know there are others that have expressed the same concerns with the interview that they had. My concerns from the September meeting were confirmed. In my opinion, this is a last ditch effort to get the results that the Board of Education feel they need not to renovate the current high school. How much more money has to be spent until our high school gets the very needed renovations? Thank you very much.
The next individual to sign up to speak, Ms. Rachel.
I'm going to not speak because of what Linda spoke about and I appreciate her bringing the subject up. This is the first topic about it and I don't want to detract from her observations.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. The last individual is Mr. James Coles.
James Coles from Farmington. Well, thank you for the opportunity and again, I very much appreciate this report from what seems like a dueling tactic. In August last year, the Board of Commissioners voted for it to pass the county project, including funds for Phase One, parts A and B of the Davie County High School renovations. This was outlined a year ago in February by the Board of Education's Home Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee with their projected costs of $5.75 million. And perhaps because of your singular foresight and the adoption of zero-based budgeting and the evergreen orbit, this did not result in any increase in the tax rate. Recently, the chairman of the Board of Education called the $6 million dollar amount earmarked for the Davie High School renovations a quote "Band-Aid." This is a distasteful caricature which denigrates those who pay taxes in Davie County. Whereas a one cent increase in our current tax rate is approximately $420,000, a $6 million expenditure represents a 14.3 cent increase of the tax rate from 62 cents per hundred to 76 cents. Now that would be a 23% increase in property taxes for one year. Of course, most folks might assume this would be spread out over 10 or 20 years at 4% interest and therefore be quote "acceptable." But eventually, the borrowed money has to be paid and over time, one might consider this rather cynical ploy in the sense that the money spent quote "on the children" and quote "is eventually going to be paid by the children themselves sometime in the future." However, the chairman of the Board of Education goes on to say the $6 million dollar problem quote "is actually a quote multiple of six" and quote. Does this mean 36 million? That would be 86 cents per hundred. Added to the 62 cents, that would be 138% increase. Seems like a new high school to me. The math is not that hard, but it seems the Board of Education does not even think it is necessary to do the math. The people of the county have voted three times now against this huge expenditure of money. Again, it would only saddle the economy of Davie County with even more debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weischer. Mr. Chairman, this concludes our public comment.
We are now to our consent agenda. I'll do a second. Now, if you can read this and we have a motion on the agenda or any questions?
Question approved.
Have a motion to approve, is that second? Have a second. Any comments, discussion? Show your approval, went up lifting hand. We're now to staff reports.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to announce that we have two new employees, one is a finance thing here with payroll position, that is Brittany Vanatty, who's joining the finance department February 1st. She is a lifelong resident of Davie County, graduated from Davie County High School. She got her undergrad from UNC Charlotte, is getting her master's degree in the day from Appalachian. And I know Robert's glad to get the relief in her office. And in the brief out of coordinator position, we have started February 1st, we hired Michael Beck, who has a home experience down at Lock School Builders and has a good knowledge of the construction industry. We will be teaching him a praise of his good solid base of construction.
For Board of Elections, filing begins February the 13th at noon and that will extend to February the 29th at noon. For our Domestic Violence Department, the Dragonfly House with CAC, we'll have a fundraiser dinner this Saturday evening at Romeo Run. If anybody would like a ticket, please make a reservation with the Domestic Violence Office that can get you a ticket. February is Team Dating Violence Prevention and Awareness Month and staff and volunteers will be passing out information ribbons at the high school. For our Health Department, just to let you know that our home health was re-accredited in December of this year or this past year. It is currently undergoing a re-validation survey for the Centers of Medicare and Medicaid Services. They're also working on a lot of different grant opportunities, so stay tuned with that. They're doing a lot of partnering relationships with surrounding counties and other agencies for grant funds to provide new services. And the new health, state health director was appointed, Dr. Laura Gerald, and that was effective February 1st, so we now have a new state health director. And last but not least, our town hall meeting for the month of February is scheduled for February the 20th, which is the third Monday of the month. It will be 6:00 PM and it will be at the Smith Grove Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any home business?
Mr. Chairman, if I'm out of line here in the home business, it's telling. But our good friend Dwayne Cookson from Little League is here tonight. I know that you and Vice Chairman Weiskarver had met when Mr. Cookson and some of the representatives of Little League talked about their space problem down at the complex. They have, they have some great ideas to help kids and families down there on their current, at their current location. I know we've had discussions about other property and things of that nature. Could you all, could you give us, or you and Mr. Weiskarver, just give us a brief update as to what kind of, what transpired, what that means, some of the ideas that came forward?
Well, we can give you just a thumbnail sketch. Nothing was actually cast in stone. We discussed some things. We looked at the financial situation of the Little League and we suggested then that they look at other banks, to go bank shopping, even to look for somebody that might want to underwrite the all or part or all or part of the entire project. I know we have a branch bank in Trust Park in this county and it's certainly reasonable to think that somebody might want to have a Bank X Little League park. There's a couple of new banks in the area that might like to see that as a way of getting a foot in the door. We, it was my understanding, and I can't speak for Robert or Jim or Beth, but we were waiting for the Little League folks to get back to us and unless, I have heard, so I guess the ball's in their court. We also looked at their cash flow and we had some real concerns with their cash flow and we were looking for a way to help them change their cash flow. And nothing, anything we did, they would certainly have to come before this board, but we discussed some options. Nothing was decided as far as a firm locked in stone decision. Do you remember anything else, any of you that were there?
Well, I just, I just appreciate you meeting with them and I, I want us to, I know there's been a lot of debate and a lot of discussion over land issues and things of that nature, but, but this program, this program and what it represents and what it means to kids in this county and families in this county, I don't think we can, like most all of us here have been involved in it, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, is almost immeasurable. And so I would just hopefully continue to do anything we can to help them expand on that current facility. Certainly government's not the answer to all, all problems and we can't be the answer all there, but I, you know, I hope we'll continue to move forward and help them in any way we possibly can. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Well, I can assure you, nobody in the room, when we met with the Little League folks, none of us had any negative feelings towards what they were doing. We were just looking for a way to make it the best possible situation for all concerned. We were just looking for a way to make it the best possible situation for all concerned and that's, I think that's still our position. We're groping a little bit to find the very best way. Now, I see Mr. Cookson back in the, back of the room, back there. Would you take the responsibility of talking to the Little League folks and Robert and me and let's set a date and we can all get back together? The place, the time? Just coordinate that if you would, please.
Absolutely, we would have to.
So, you'll be hearing from Beth soon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure? Anything else in the old business?
Just question, Mr. Chairman, we can discuss moving forward with naming the auditorium at the same time. The honor commissioner of the public knowledge, is it something we can reengage or?
Well, of course, that's up to the board. That was discussed, I don't think it's ever been discussed in this room. I think it's discussed in Ben's office today, or two or three. I think we need a committee to study that. You're on a very slippery slope because nobody in this room thought more about the knowledge than I do. However, you start naming buildings, floors, rooms, there's a lot to consider and we want to be fair and equitable and at all times open and crystal clear. So, I think there probably the thing to do is to, for me, to appoint a committee and ask the committee to investigate it and report back to this board. And would you chair that committee?
I'd be honored to.
And?
Under one, under one condition.
What's that?
You don't name a sewer plant after me.
Well, I just, that's a humble thought. Mark, would you serve him? Well, I understood that you, you hound yourself pretty well with Andrew Unberg out there.
Anyway, we, I think we all have, Mr. Lloyd and Ty's thing.
Absolutely.
And, and I'm sensitive to what you say as well, but I, I'd be glad to do that and I'll, like, um, to talk each of the commissioners and staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Also, I think we need to involve the senior center. It is their property and they, they should be consulted, their chairman as well as their director. Anything else on our old business? New business? Okay. So, we are approaching the end of our, our business and it was a short meeting. Sometimes short is good. I think we've accomplished what we set out to perform. I would just like to summarize the meeting tonight. I was delighted to have those boys and girls from Bear Creek Church. That's a good group of folks doing a good thing. And Jerry and his other counselors have really worked hard with those young people and I predict good things for those kids because they're getting good guidance and they've got good role models and I feel very positive about it. And I was delighted to have them here tonight. We had two speakers tonight, Dr. Coles and Mrs. Mace. I frankly don't know that I have any good answers for either one of them. I will say this in response to Mrs. Mace, trust me, you're not the first person to talk to me about this problem and I have another appointment tomorrow and I am concerned. However, I think I should tell everybody that this is a school board issue, not really a board commissioner's issue. I would strongly recommend, Mrs. Mace and Dr. Coles, that you both take your opinions down to the school tomorrow night and present them as eloquently as you did with us. I think they need to hear of what is going on. Perhaps they know, perhaps they don't. I have no way of knowing. So, if you would, I encourage you to go down there and stick your mind, whatever it may be, and I hope you have gotten a warm reception here tonight and I hope you get the same type reception there tomorrow night. Feel free to come back to this board at any time and discuss any subject, whatever it may be, as long as you don't talk about naming a sewer plant after Ken, we'll be all right. And Glenn may push that, I don't know. I think that's the gist of it. I think we need to keep our communication lines open, both at this board and at that board and I value your input, all five of, of this group. So, having said all that, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. I would, I would adjourn. Thank you all for coming.